One nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need to motion to sign awards.
So moved.
Second, the all favorite. Make a motion that we accept the minutes as written for June 13th meeting. Row second. All in favor?
Motion then to approve the June 18th spec- special select board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
I wasn't. Didn't know I was.
You were. What was the one we were at? What's the one we were at?
Well, does it say I was there?
I was actually, ah, okay.
So what, so mine is rarely to the team. I have two 13s.
Oh, you have a 13, I'm a 13.
I have two 18s. I don't have an 18, I only have a 13. Was I on there?
Yes.
Okay. I, I only missed one meeting. Thank you very much.
That was the one that said, "Sign into the survivor's stuff."
Yes, and all that other things we did too. And John was there, right?
Yes.
I was there at that special select board meeting because you took, no, it's right.
Yes.
Okay. Nothing matters. Old business. Okay, when they follow up on speed zone, my flashing beacon. What did you find out?
All right, I included a letter here from, well, I started with Peter Coughlin, director, main local road center with a DOT. He forwarded it on to another man named Stephen Landry. I'll just read it. It says, "Main DOT, he has a program in which we give a dynamic speed sign to you, the town would own it. The signs are meant to be posted and need to be moved around every three weeks. Some towns have built trailers for the sign to make them more easily portable. The conditions for main DOT giving you one of these is as follows. One, you attend, agree to attend a half-day training on how to use it held in Augusta." And that training is in September, I found out. You two, you share the information you collected of the speed sign with law enforcement. Three, you move the sign around every few weeks. Studies have shown that these signs lose effectiveness if left in one place too long. And four, should you ensure, oh, you should ensure the sign, they are valued around $3,700. They are yours. If they get broken, main DOT will not be replacing them." So that's the option when I asked about the flashing beacon at the intersection of the North Bed Corner.
They don't have those anymore. There's no thing in flashing beacon.
He says, "It's a tough situation. A flashing beacon will likely have little effect on speeding for this expense. It would have, it would have to be justified and meet engineering criteria and take precedent over other more pressing needs elsewhere and then be programmed and funded, but only if it met all that criteria. If accident rate is not bad there, then it likely will not happen."
I think it is accident, it's bad there, is it not?
I think.
You don't think the accident is bad in North Bed Corner with what's bad?
It's very different.
So that's why they offered the other solution.
There are other things that I've seen. I know what you're saying about this beacon, but the things I've seen lately are these little flashes around the speed limit that flash when you're speeding, which I happen to see once in a while.
That's what he's suggesting.
Yeah, but it's different.
That's the person ahead of you.
Well. No, you must be.
Then why are we doing it if we don't have an accident problem there?
I believe it was brought to our attention last meeting, which everyone said over and over that it's a problem needed. And there have been, you know.
So what, what shall we do with this? Tony, what, what, your opinion? Tony?
So it's only going to use as a threat, so to speak, because you don't have any force, anyone to enforce. The speed limit will go off, correct? So it's gonna, if we can afford it, I'll do anything to help, help it. But you gotta realize that it's not gonna be the end goal. It's not gonna be the way it's going.
Well, she just said that they're giving this thing to us and we have to move it around.
Right.
But he's saying, what are the consequences? If somebody continues to speed, who's going to stop?
What does it mean, share the, share the results with the law, law enforcement? What does that mean? What does that curtail, what does that?
You call the county policeman and say.
It's flashing every two minutes because people are going over the speed limit.
Do we get a camera after we have, you know, a.
Except that it doesn't come, it's not coming to statute for the use of a camera.
I think that if.
But the ordinance has to be.
Tony, if it's.
Presence of the officer.
If it's something they're giving us and we'd have to take it to town meeting and the whole town would have to decide if they like it. How do we pick up another article? Do you think that's a good idea for me?
It's a gift that costs money.
Is that just, is the trailer one of the same?
So we can't accept it as a select board.
Feedback one that he mentions down below, is that one of the same?
The one down here.
But I understand for.
Speedy feedback, so.
There are no consequences.
Is that the same as the one of, oh, without the first paragraph of the trailer? Or is that some different?
Uh, that's right. That's the same thing.
It's a speed, like, feedback, so.
Because he, he copied Stephen guy in the main.
This is a speed sign, right?
Well, dynamic feedback.
So Rachel, what was your opinion?
I tend to agree with Tony. I, on the surface, it seems like a nice idea, but there are no, there's no consequence for this. And I think what happens is, over a period of time, people know that there's no punishment here. They know there's no consequence, so they may slow down a little speed right back.
May I add a little something to this conversation? Something that we have, I have done, and there were some social media comments that were brought to my attention about speeding on a particular road. And what I did was contact my Crabtree Chief Deputy and asked him to ask the per, the officer that has the selective service duty to watch that road. And that's something that was done. So that's something proactive. We do do things, but this is another level. So we do have selective service.
Well, that's like, that's like a label. A label, watch.
Right.
Yeah.
If somebody sees an offensive.
Yeah, let me know. I'll text Mike and.
That they know by somebody and try to get it resolved.
Yeah.
Okay, might not be the same person next time they're there, but it might be another person creating the offense.
The only one I've seen really work, i- it seems to me, is the one in Millbridge. We have to slow down to like 15 miles an hour or something, and everybody gets flashed.
And so you think that works? I went to 25 and I was waiting for the thing to stop.
And it didn't stop, yeah.
No, I was under 25 and it said, "I want to see this thing stop flashing."
Yeah.
But, uh, Dan, what do you think?
Uh, I would prefer a Millbridge similar, but if the other option.
And that's in the same spot all the time.
Yes, it is. It never moves.
I thought that one should be down as you started heading.
It's like you begin to slow down before you get there.
Like near the, uh, Fairpoint building.
But what about this loophole where we can put it for more aggressive?
It doesn't cost anything. I, anything can help.
You want to put it on the article, put the town to accept, because it does involve our maintenance.
Yes, yeah, I would.
It hasn't been given to us yet.
Well, you, then you, you do, you treat it like a grant. If, if we are offered the opportunity to receive this from DOT with the town vote to take it, that's what you have to do. You want to send me to class? I don't know. Do you want to go to class again? You go all the time.
Well, she could go on your way out.
Listen, you're the official shooter.
On your way out, boy, home. You could just move it.
She's not just an official active shooter incident if something happens, not the shooter.
We got her.
Barbara.
As a citizen in the community, I think anything we can do to slow cars down. We have, we had the marathon. We had the bike, bikes in here. We have people here for the summer that walk from there. We have children receiving bicycles and they can't ride. People are doing 50 and passing cars. It's ridiculous. Anything we can do to remind you, you are in a limited speed limit area. And I do think it's good to move it around, because they get used to it. I some, I think Rachel was saying, you get used to it in one spot, so as soon as you pass there, get past it. But I think it's just a reminder to people that, hey, you know, this is a limited zone here. And I'm gonna add also that back when John Sutherland was here as our administrator, I, I spoke before this, before the board several times. I've had one man hit a telephone pole, he died. I had another person almost land through a house. I had a dog that was hit. This is in a 25 mile an hour zone. So I think anything, I ask for anything we can do to remind people that there is speed limits in certain areas of this town, it would be beneficial, because God knows, you don't want to see a pedestrian or child hit.
Thank you, Barbara.
No, thank you.
So let's make a motion to, to put this as an article on the, on the town meeting. And then we'll go down the slide.
Yeah, I so moved that we, uh, put this on a town article for the August meeting to acquire a speed flashing beacon.
To accept it and give it to the.
If we receive it, if we receive it, if we can.
Yes.
Second. All in favor? Okay, short thing with the license renewal. Anything changed, or is this the first one that you've ever, this is a renewal?
It's a renewal.
So nothing's changed.
So you're gonna sing the same, stand up to sing the same song you did last year?
Yeah, so be it, so be it.
So do we have a motion to accept the short thing with the license as.
So moved.
Yes. All in favor? Our treasurer has submitted a request for an abatement, is it? Do we have abatement? I don't think we have one for you. Okay, uh, for sewer count 401750, reason computer error, it's for 5610. Do we have a motion to accept this abatement as written? And while we're signing them, how about, we'll do it all at once, I can say. A motion to accept an abatement for account number 1733 for an amount of $1,024.93. And the reason town tax acquired property.
And?
And explain. And for account 1813, amount of 2337 for game and processing error. Do we have a motion to accept all the, all three?
Yes.
Second. All in favor? What is the tax accord?
I think it's.
MMA grant award for WWTP gas detector, Renee. Going on there?
We were visited by MMA Risk Management, Angela, before she retired. And one of her recommendations for a wastewater treatment plant was to purchase a secondary gas detector and to have, there's a docking system that you can get with them. And anyway, she's, she advised us to apply a special scholarship through MMA to cover most of the cost of it, and we won. We got it.
Okay.
So, we're.
That's great.
Covers up to two-thirds of the cost, but not exceeding $1,944.49. So I agree.
Do we have an end of budget for the other third?
Yes.
Or is it gonna be on this?
Nope.
Coming months in the wastewater budget.
So, um.
Great.
Under, um, the, according to the.
All right, we have a sewer commitment that we have to sign. February 1st to April 30th for $28,446. I need a motion that we sign the sewer commitment for this.
So moved.
For this. Second. All in favor? Thank you, Rachel. He, he was in agreement? Yes. All right. Sign the abandons and town administrator per contract. We discussed this in last meeting.
Yes.
So any motion that we agreed to sign?
Motion to sign, set, what are you agreeing to send in?
All in favor? Town office will be closed this Friday for urine processing, so you'll need to register your car or pay your taxes or have any other business to involve, able to be here working. Like they will not be open. Correct.
Maybe you're working. We won't be answering phones and.
We're not.
We're processing.
Very busy. Sign tax required property deed. So.
Do you order any lunch?
Sounds like there's more than two people here that you go out and do this.
We need a witness to sign, um, the deed that they're signing, so we need somebody, John, somebody to witness the deed for us. I have to authorize it, so I can't witness it.
Quick one.
We're signing a quick claim deed for tax and prior property that's been paid for. I need a motion for that David Renaud Jr. Law Act 4, law 27B. And apparently, it's already been handed to him. I have a motion to sign the quick claim deed.
Motion to sign the quick claim deed.
Second. All in favor? This is the one where you have to sign whatever is typed under the name exactly. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is, you so kindly offered to put me on a, made me a full legislative policy committee that meets in Augusta. There are two other very lucky people who want to do this job. So you have to vote for one of the people. And seeing as you nominated me, tell me, name twice before you vote for any of them. I don't care if I go or not, but I'd like to. I'd like to represent the town in Augusta, MMA, to make sure that local control is being kept and that.
This is a rank choice voting?
I don't know. Does these persons get the same one? I watched that one.
What's the reach?
Oh, you all have it.
This is the official ballot.
Oh, so they have to sign this?
Yeah, bring it, just bring it.
And. So how, so they get all some, same person? Because that's the official ballot, isn't it?
Should we, have we checked your name off? We're gonna vote.
What says?
Yeah, most municipalities are asked to vote for two candidates, because there are two elected LPC members for most districts.
Two?
Just want one.
Yes.
So.
Rank choice voting.
No. It was pink on, white area fish.
These are all the people. I think it's only two meetings and it's like all day. And it's, I base, based on the, um, the different bills that are sent to the legislature and which ones that the MMA want to lobby against, or, or Act 4. And so some of them get put on the agenda, and a good example will be discussed tonight about shellfish. There was a bill and a public hearing that was quickly put on, but not one of the notice papers, did not know, and it will greatly affect the town on our municipal patrol of our plant lots, and that's one of the reasons why I had volunteered to go down to this legislative committee, um, for two years, if I get lucky enough to be voted in.
So you've already vote, they've already voted to put you on the ballot, so they don't need to vote tonight, right? To sign, or have they already done?
They just.
Do they make a motion?
They don't. They're just, I don't think, I don't think they need a motion. I think they just sign it. Okay, thank you very much. Let's see how it goes. Code enforcement officer with his resignation. Renee, do we have a resignation here?
No, we read it already. He verbally, I've asked him for it written, but he verbally, he's gone.
Effective two weeks ago, right?
Well, he, he agreed to stay on until we found somebody.
Okay, let's see what you say.
Or clarification, was this Bruce Green?
Yes.
It's more of this.
And this is this. Yes, there you go. So, um, so we have a prospective in-house person interested in taking this position, so I believe, do we build a specific session for that first? I don't know. The process. We do have a, a session.
We do.
I don't know if we had any discussion on this or not, or.
I've no idea of this.
Okay. Do we say?
Yeah.
I invited him here. Oh, okay.
Who's this, Bobby?
Gary.
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 Those three guys up there?
He, uh, was interested in training for this position. He wants to practice.
Oh, at the recycle center.
Yeah.
Okay, come on up here. You have a full audience today.
How do you think you, what do you think? You'd like to take on this position?
Yeah, I'm not taking on.
He, he's already read all the books that Bruce has given him. And then he, he, after he read the books, I asked him, "Do you still want to do it?" And he said, "Yes," so.
So we will discuss the details with executive session. So, but I think that we're leaning toward, um, hourly, like six, six to eight hours a week where you actually have office hours instead of just, instead of structuring it like other type of positions. Because it's so critical that the town people need to know when and where they can get ahold of their code enforcement officer, that it would be important that, and Gary's agreed to spend at least like two half-days or one full day available to people and to go out and do checks on the code enforcement. We talked about that, right? And so I think rather than just be there when, it would be basis as an hourly position as opposed to a stipend position. But that will have to be decided amongst the entire select board. That would be my suggestion. I found that in the last case, many, many phone calls came into the town office requesting the code enforcement officer, and it was hard to pin down when and where they were and how to get ahold of them. So I think going forward, it would be great if, let's just, for example, Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine to 12, we had a code enforcement officer somewhere where we knew where you were, and you were sitting somewhere studying or whatever.
And then postions.
That, that would be fantastic.
Yeah.
So we're hoping to do that. I have this appointment papers. Do you want to discuss that first, before your appointment? Your appointment? I, I find that appointment right now. I, because I think we've discussed the compensation.
Seems like a fine-upstanding citizen.
Yes.
Yes. And he's good at recycling.
He's available. Lots of things on the hands, nice too. So, uh, do we need a motion? Need a motion to appoint Gary?
I, I move that we, uh, select Gary.
Gary. Gary Renaud.
Gary.
I'll sec, I'll second that.
RHO?
ADE.
Oh.
What's the, say that again?
RHO, ADE.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you for staying after you read the books.
Do we have a quiz for him or a quiz?
I guess.
State will.
At some point, yes.
I can't find it on the computer yet.
We'll get it straight now. State made a request to place a sign off Bar Road.
It says, um, I was, I was contacted by Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. Henry Jones out of the Jonesboro office. And the letter's in your packet. It, he's just asking if they can install these signs up on the town right of way Bar Road. It's, it's about the shorebirds and, um, about how they can help by not having unleashed dogs or having dogs come to feed each other. But he just needs permission to post these signs in the right of way.
Yes.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? I am one of the owners of that property.
Excuse me? This is the town right of way.
It's still a private road that has a town right of way. Where are they gonna put the signs?
Don't we plow that road?
No, we plow the road.
We plow and maintain the road. We have the right of way.
Where are they gonna put the signs on?
Well, the town has a right of way on any roads they plow, so within the right of way of the town.
Right.
I'm sure they want to.
That's great that I do wrong.
Excuse me?
I'm su, I'm sure you can go out and come up with a compromise.
Shall I read this out loud?
Um.
Sure.
So the, the main department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife is interested in installing informational signs at the east end of the Bar Road within the town road right of way. The signs are not finalized, but will likely include notification signs, alert users to the presence of shorebirds and how to minimize disturbance, and potentially, an interpretive sign provides ecology of shorebirds and other wildlife using the Lubec Sandbar area. See attached images for these. The notification signs will be on a single sign post, and the interpretive sign will likely be on a two to four wooden post with a three to four inch wide by two, oh, foot, foot wide by a two to three foot high sign mounted vertically or at 45 degrees, similar to the one in this picture. That would be this one.
Oh, so it's like a, you know, formative sign for the shoreline.
My, my question is, even though it's a town maintained right of way and has been for quite a while, the property is still privately owned by myself and Paul. Because it comes right down the middle of the road. That's where the property line is.
That's confusing to me, because I, my understanding is a privately owned property with a road on it would be.
Because it's municipally.
Would be, yeah, would be filed by you.
There's really no need to plow it by me, because no one goes down there, as far as I'm concerned, during the winter time. So the question comes up, and this came up a long time ago, when I purchased, when I purchased that land, this group approached me and wanted to put a sign down the end of the road on the left-hand side of the road. And they were denied. By myself and Mr. Olson.
Could I ask you why you were, why you rejected that?
Because it basically looks like the property is state property. It becomes a mess, because people leave all kinds of trash down there. And that's why we basically decided not to let Fish and Game put a sign down there.
Because it would encourage usage?
It would encourage people parking there and thinking it's a state property and the state's gonna clean it up and they leave their mess. They leave their mess now.
Do you have any private road or any signs that indicate that it's a private road?
No, we don't. Never have.
Not a private road.
Oh.
Julie.
Yes.
I want to say it is a private road, but it's maintained by the town, so the climbers can get down the road.
And you're, and the problem with that?
We can't maintain.
Just as I explained to you.
We can't maintain a private road. I've already told everyone.
The right of way goes back to the early 1900s. And I don't have it with me. Maybe I should have brought it with me. But it goes back to the purpose of basically clamming and fishing.
And that's 10% of our working population, of climbers.
Yeah. And we've never denied, myself and Ms. Olson have never denied people going down there, parking their vehicles down there, as long as they pick up their mess.
Well, I, I agree with that.
But the problem is, the big thing came to be when years ago, they bought that bird sanctuary out at the end of Mr. Olson's land, on the south side of his property, and people would come down there, including tour buses. They would drive a tour bus down there and just leave all kinds of messes down there.
Julie, is there any way for the state to put it on their land? My great-grandfather owned that too, so I'm well familiar with it. My problem with the whole thing is, if we don't put these signs up about the dogs, we're losing our clam flats. We had our biologists come and tell us, because the dogs are running loose down there. The water quality tests are failing. So is there a place on the state land that they could put the signs? I mean, I don't know where it's. I mean, I don't know where it's stopped.
The state, the state land is further down, further south of that property.
So, we're gonna, we have to keep our beaches, I mean, we're gonna put people out of work, is there any way we could put the signs anywhere at all so that we don't?
I don't know, I'm gonna have to talk to Mr. Olson about, you know, feel, feel what he thinks about us.
How far down the, down the right-of-way would the sign be going?
Because we need more information. Where do they want to put the sign?
If it's not seen.
By the road.
By the road, then.
Why would it be encouraged?
I don't think it would encourage.
So what is the requirement?
The dog pickup or some stuff.
That's actually technically on the property that I own.
That you own. And you said it was okay to put that there?
Nope, no one even consulted me about that.
No one puts it there, what's on there now? A sign?
There's a dog.
Rhonda made the sign.
Rhonda put a dog waste station down there.
And that's on your property?
Technically, yes.
Well, then you need to put it on the right-of-way.
If we're on the right-of-way, people are gonna run it over.
Well, no, on either side of the road.
I'm not trying to be difficult. What I'm trying to tell you is that years ago when that land was purchased, it was a matter of hours that Fish and Game called me up and wanted to put a sign there that it was okay to have public parking there. Okay? And what happened in probably the next four or five months is that the word got out because someone had published that that land down there, okay, was public. And it was a public beach and you can go down there and picnic and everything else. I mean, there were people, you know, driving down the Olson side of the territory, people driving onto the left side of the terr, the left side of the property and just leaving a mess. To the point where someone actually brought a barrel down there, which was a good idea to put the trash in the barrel. But then who's gonna empty the barrel? No one was emptying the barrel. So I had to go down there with a plastic bag and just empty the barrel. And finally, I removed the barrel because it was just, people were just cleaning out their vehicle down there. You know, it's like you're going to the gas station, well, I'll reach for the McDonald's and dump the donuts in the back of my car, I'm gonna dump it up, that's where we're going.
Yeah, I know what the solution is. I know that we have a serious problem with dog waste on the, on the sandbars. Because we've had conversations at the Shellfish Committee. And it's ruining our flats, so that's one of the reasons why we have to sign them, why that other, uh, why our Inland Control Officer put the voids station there.
I'm still not, this is a public road though.
It's a public right-of-way, it's actually a private road owned privately by myself and the Olson.
And Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
By the right-of-way.
But the town has the right-of-way on both sides of the road.
Well, I'd have to look back and see where the right-of-way goes back to. I don't know if it's due to the town or, you know, goes with the town. But there is a right-of-way for clamming and fishing.
And that goes way back as it's.
Exactly, early nineteen hundreds.
Well, how about we table this, I think we can make a decision. And how, when it, when I want to take, if you wouldn't mind. Data's?
Well, on the main road there to the light-out school, is that a state road or a town road?
State.
Why can't they put it on the state road right-of-way rather than the little road right-of-way?
Well, that's a good question. So do you want to check to see if there's another alternative that would be more applicable to the landowners so that it wouldn't encourage people to go down to the end of the road to read the sign?
Well, the other thing right now, I understand about the clams and the water pollution and so on like that, I understand it. But you know, people go down there and they go, oh, wow, this is cool. And now they're gonna see these signs up here probably with some, you know, image of a dog defecating on the ground. That's not cool, okay? And the other thing is the perception is gonna be that this is public property. Hey, I can come down here and, you know.
But this is the beach, it's not, you're not, you don't own the beach.
Have I?
You don't own the beach, the shoreline.
Um, technically according to main law down to the Lower Watermark, yes.
In your deed? It's in the Lower Watermark?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess we need to do some more investigation.
Goes back to an early search lawsuit down in Ellsman. Or back to the sixteen hundreds.
We're gonna table the whole thing till we get better dis, better information. Let's just table this.
And maybe the, I'm gonna call the.
All in favor? Okay, so you want to come back next week, not two weeks from now and we'll see if we can get a better handle on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, municipal solid waste.
I just want to say I'm sorry I walked out, my dog just broke down in Ellsworth, so I had an emergency. So, sorry guys.
We knew it was an emergency.
We're having the.
You did not.
It's every day.
There has been, it brought to our attention, a clarification need to be made on our waste disposal ordinance. On what definition of, what the town will pay for the trash.
Yeah, how could I include the ordinance and Marion Transfer Station, so definition of.
So, um, we did a little research and it's not entirely clear. And they, and, and we had someone request a, um, that we define what household trashes because in some municipalities, the haulers will collect the trash on a weekly basis and the town will pay for that. And then some municipalities, um, will define that a cleanout or when there's a foreclosure and the whole, or there's debris or demolition. Demolition waste or anything other than regular, regularly scheduled garbage, you know, trash for the. That the hauler charges the customer and then when they take that whole cleanout to the Marion Transfer, they pay for it. So, so there is a, um, a kind of a disagreement between, we just need to clarify what we, what we think it should mean. And I think I'm gonna defer to Jason, uh, evasious on this right now.
Could, can I clarify something too? When the hauler takes waste from a person, you know, like a household, they charge the person for hauling it away, is that correct? And then they take it to Marion Transfer.
Yeah, but talking about weekly trash pickup.
No, no, I'm talking about a specific, special.
Oh, that's different.
Do you?
So what I'm trying to get is, so if, if I go every week and dump,
Yeah.
it's either, why should the taxpayers pay for that person on a weekly basis?
No.
Regular trash pickup, I understand.
Where are they going with this, Dan, is, okay, if I clean out Mike's house and he pays me to clean out this house?
Apart from the regular trash pickup.
Yes. The taxpayers should not ever pay for this.
Now, can I ask a question?
Taxpayers.
What if Mike decides to clean out his house himself and dump it?
He would have to pay for it.
He already pays for it in his taxes.
But he pays for weekly.
He pays for weekly normal trash. Well, that's not the way I interpreted.
For four years, I have been doing it this way. When I do a cleanout, I bring it and I pay for it out of pocket. It is not fair for me to put it on the taxpayers' backs. It is actually sleazy if I did.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess I was trying to figure out whether, where you were going. Is, is there a double dipping going on? Do you understand, you know, are you charging the person to haul it away? And then are you having the municipality pay?
We do not.
You do not?
No.
So, okay. And it would be.
That should ever happen.
Okay, that's what I wanted, yes, okay, good, good.
We, we, the taxpayers should have to pay a nickel for a cleanout. It's just weekly trash.
Yes.
That's, it should be clarified because others don't take it.
We need, yeah, so it needs to be clarified.
Clarified, yeah.
Yes.
Can we say, let's say C and D, Construction, Demolition, Material, would have an independent hauler and then it would be paid independently by whoever requests that C and D to be rules?
It's not just that though, it's just somebody who has all, a bunch of junk in their garage.
Well, no, but I'm saying.
They've collected, that's not construction demolition.
If you do the demolition of a building and your town's renovating it.
That's, that's gotta be paid for by me.
Right, but I would be paying you.
Yes.
For the container and the hauler away.
Yes.
Independent of a normal week pickup.
Right.
And a cleanout should be the same.
And the same thing. If you have to have a whole dumpster being delivered because you have to clean your whole garage out because you forgot to clean in twenty years? I don't think the taxpayer should.
No, I mean.
And believe me, there are.
They're going to have their tongue very easily.
See, that's, that's what I'm trying to say. Tighten it up a little bit, we've cut the budget on the waste.
Yeah.
I mean.
And it involves thousands of dollars.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and I've heard of incidences like this and it bothers me.
I think it's unclear, so.
Yeah.
I mean, don't get me wrong.
I agree.
I mean, it's, it's not a gray area, no other town, hey, we have to.
The difference between us and.
The double dipping bothers.
Eastern guys.
Me too, I'm with you.
We can just ban the ordinance, get rid of it, make a new definition. What's un, what's, what's unclear is the definition in an ordinance that was created in July of nineteen, of nineteen ninety-five, which says municipal solid waste, any trash or other non-hazardous, non-industrial waste generated from a residence or business within the town of Lubeck. So, a hauler must transport MSW, which is municipal solid waste, collected from residents and businesses in the town of Lubeck to a licensed transfer station landfill incineration site within seventy-two hours of collection, blah, 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 whatever, go on, and so forth. But I think that this ordinance was created, I understand from the history, because we, we, our, our dump was closed, a dump road, like, a cobro. And so they wanted, um, I heard from Eastport and the manager of Eastport says that they take care of most of the waste there because they don't want things on the side of the road. East Machias in Pembroke refused to pay for cleanouts and they make the haulers charge the clients and then they take it, they take it to the Marion Transfer. This probably needs to be brought before the entire town, I don't think the select board should make the decision.
I don't believe that. I don't believe that, I think you guys should sit there and make the decision.
Well, it's, unfortunately, it's in an ordinance. And the ordinance has to be changed by, if we didn't have an ordinance, the select board can make a decision.
This is originally part of the ordinance.
This isn't.
This could cost the taxpayers twenty thousand dollars.
I've been sat on the budget committee this year with Jason. We were happy that people are recycling enough.
Yes.
And other things that we got a cut from our Marion Transfer.
Yes.
Costs. My concern is if I sell my house and I leave a bunch of junk behind, the new person's coming in and they say, okay, just put it out of the curb. And every person in Lubeck is gonna pay for it, I think that's where.
Well, I do too, but Renee has pointed out to me that, that East Machias in Pembroke, the select board has made that decision. But we have, unfortunately, whoever was here in nineteen ninety-five created an ordinance and there are rules to change an ordinance or define a definition.
Could you tell me, Carol, what the rules are to change an ordinance, if you don't mind?
You have to have a public hearing.
Okay.
And then you have to have a special town meeting or a town meeting. So we would have to have a public hearing before the August meeting and then the definitions would have to be modified. Any ordinance has to be done that way.
The other concern that I think should be brought out if we have this type of a change in the ordinance of what the cost is going to go up to. We lost, I think, I know it was over five thousand dollars, it came down. We're gonna go up maybe fifteen thousand dollars.
I'm prepared to do a temporary motion to, to agree to this.
Is it possible to do like an addendum on this?
I can folder how to create an ordinance, you know, and it's like an entire legal thing.
But you're saying it can be, you can vote at least on a temporary to lead us up to.
I, I, I would like to do that and then Renee will find out whether there's legally binding. Would that be approval, approval that we temporarily vote to? Go ahead, Jason.
I was told by Marion, all they have to do is have a word, a word from the select board, that this is the way it is.
And he told me, and he told me that as well. But it was, it was our town administrator who pointed out that we have an ordinance and.
It's a lot of money, so barring.
But we need to be able to have a power of, so all Marion Transfer Station needs is a, is a minutes from a select board meeting that we do not pay for a cleanout. And that's what I want to do, but I'm being torn between.
Well, why don't we, why don't we use our power of whatever's behind the table to temporarily do it for now?
Yes.
Barring.
And then permanently put it in an ordinance.
And permanently put it in.
Does that sound like, do you like that idea? Okay.
I think that's.
I don't think anyone would argue about it, no.
No, I just want to start with a funny memory.
Right, no, of course not.
Yeah, be surprised, but I don't think.
So, let's make a motion that.
We want to set a public hearing?
Well, until we get to, like, maybe a town meeting.
We've got to have a public hearing changing at a town meeting.
They want it, we want.
You might be able to have a public hearing on the same night as the town meeting. What kind of?
If we could find one.
Yeah, yeah.
Quick.
Yeah, and that's coming up in August, so.
Or perhaps just an addendum to it, doesn't need one, just vote it.
I, I see, I don't think you can make an addendum to an ordinance, so. We, let's just go on record with the select board, um, do we all agree that in fact, the town, as selecting representing the taxpayer, we do not want to pay for anything other than household trash, weekly, bi-weekly, twice a week, whatever, trash taken to the, uh, to Marion Transfer and not a large individual person's cleanout.
One at a time, yeah, one, like a one-time.
Do you want to authorize a letter drafted by me so that we don't have to have another meeting?
Yes.
Perhaps you sign a letter? Yeah, you can sign a letter and send it, and send it to Marion Transfer then. And if you find out the memorandum, we have to go further with anything else, we will, from that sound.
Okay.
Now, I'm sure.
Second, just a second, just a, oh, why not, what are we doing, second, now it's a discussion.
I just wanted to share, I know that at the last school board meeting, members of the LCLC came before the school board and wanted to get rid of books. And they were told they could take them down to recycling if they tore the covers off. It's my understanding that they got a dumpster and that dumpster will go to Marion Transfer. Do you know how heavy books are? This town will pay for those books and yet at that meeting, LCLC said they were paying for it. Well, they're not, we're paying for it.
The town did pay for it, I understand.
Say that again, please.
The town did not pay for that, I understand. But there are, are.
That's heavy.
There are cleanouts that will pay by the town, but I think it's, it was unclear. So to give everybody the benefit of the doubt going forward, we will construct this letter and send it to Marion Transfer then.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
The town will not pay for cleanouts. But it's still a good faith acknowledgement by the hauler that they are in fact doing a cleanout. I mean, is it enforceable?
I, I believe it is. You can tell by what's in there. And again, it all comes down to morals and character.
Yes, and I did speak to the, um, the site manager of Marion Transfer this week and he did say all he needed was a letter from the selectmen.
Okay.
So we should probably go with that for now.
Yeah.
Okay. So we all favor, we did vote. Yep.
Lubeck landmarks request.
Oh, I have to move away from the energy. I do a landmarks panel. Um, as you, I'm Richard, we're the president of Lubeck Landmarks. As you know, the bribe shed went to Campabello in January, I don't want to be harsh with that. Peter Thornton is, is paid to bring it back. Originally, we were going to put it in the cat food, cat food factory. And, but since then, the cat food factory has blown down, demolished, and I believe Marshall, who's the owner, is about ready to sell it. So we have to move the, um, bribe shed so that Peter may reconstruct it as originally built. A smaller but appropriate. Um, I have found that there is some land behind the Sultan Sanjet.
Ricky.
Ricky, thank you, almost called him Peter. Uh, has said that that would be fine with him. I would like to add that there is no, nothing, um, toxic in this. I mean, I think one of the original reasons for not having it there was if we had toxic materials, it's just wood right now. So I need to ask the select board if they would allow this to happen.
This has nothing to do with the remaining roof or any of that stuff, it's just.
It's the thing to build, the remain. It's the thing to build the remain, whatever's there.
It's just beams and things.
Yes.
Where are they, where are they now?
Part of them are down at the cat food factory and part of them are on the shore. Peter, as soon as he finds out where he can put them, he'll pick them up.
Excuse me, when you say on the shore, you're talking about.
Yes, in Campavello.
Okay.
And Campavello is getting quite sick of us, as rightly they should.
But I thought it was just the roof and isn't mostly the roof uh toxic?
It's mostly just the roof now and it's in pot.
Asshole.
Well, that's, I was never asshole, well, well, that was shingle, that was wood shingle.
Wood shingle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Tony, Dan.
Where is it, what site you talking about?
Where I don't wanna put it?
Yeah.
It's behind the new Salt and Sanjet, without county road, behind the existing building, there's quite a bit of land.
The road keeps going.
Yes, yeah.
So it's all rural area.
Yeah.
Is there any plant paths on that road, Julie?
Down behind it.
Down behind this?
It's not quite that far.
So how far would it be from shoreline?
But it's a ways, it's quite a ways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How far would it be to shoreline?
I don't know in feet, but I'm pretty sure it's far enough away so that it wouldn't be a drainage issue.
Yeah, it's far, the, I think the opening was about a hundred yards past the, maybe a hundred yards past the garage.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, there's only more than two, more than two and fifty feet, but it's slowly in the middle of the ground.
Peter, uh, at at the time of the uh Historic Society, uh, had to reconstruct some things out there and he did that out of the Salt and Sanjet.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Now, that road that goes to Salt and Sanjet, is that the town roads?
Yes.
Yes.
So the gate gets closed every afternoon at four o'clock or whatever. So that that gate still continued to be closed because now we're sharing it with a private individual for access.
Nope, the gate will be closed. And then get in and out before between six thirty and three.
Yeah, yeah. Or they get locked in.
Okay.
Has any, has anybody looked into any laws that might be on the books either way? I'm putting this here, I'm just asking a question.
Up until then, I I should have told you that Peter took most of the waste that was from the brine shed that would be considered hazardous or toxic or anything like that to Juniper Ridge and he's pretty good at sorting that stuff out. And so what is left he seems fine.
Davis?
Uh, I would say that when we took the Marina part and we had a lot of clothes and other things, that we took it right where she's putting it, talking about, and we stored it for years.
But then that was now somebody's.
Yeah, but it but it's, it was.
Barbara?
I have two questions, please, one is how long would it be stored there? And number two, because they create a fire hazard, those buildings are made of metal. And if somebody wanted to be malicious, Dr. Day, you start a fire on that property and actually I have a third one. You're opening up a precedent that anybody else that has something that has to be stored can come and say, well, you have plenty of land back there. If you let one store it, then you have to let everybody else store it, whether it's.
Well, let's not look at it as storing.
So then it's, let me, let me just finish.
Sure.
You know, can you give a timeline as to when it's gonna be reconstructed? If you say within a year, it'll be out of there, I would ask the the selectmen to look at the fire situation, that could be a safety hazard from the, from the, from NMA as far as a fire happening back there and then are you liable for that material if it burns? Because it's on a town property, I'm only asking.
What do you say, Bobby?
That's a, that's a, and it's.
I'm more sure he just said, just put it down behind the. Was he?
He's ready to say, put it down behind the.
I think that was all cleared off. Um.
And you know, I think it is, if MMA doesn't have a problem and we just say it as a.
If our insurance company doesn't have a problem and Public Works does not have a problem.
And it is as a. And we write it up as a per request basis so that we can
On a temporary basis.
in the future say no, if someone else comes in or yes, but I don't think a timeframe is unrealistic.
I think it should be, I should be, that there was a temporary storage of the remainder of the of the reusable wood to uh with the intention of constructing a model
Yeah. Yeah.
of the old uh.
Brine shed.
Brine shed. Good Ricky with the Public Works permission.
Yes.
And the signing off of the fire, the fire chief over there, I think, I think we're good.
And if we could get, and if we could get, how about a timeframe and if if not, at that point, we pay.
Did you get all that? Yes, temporary.
Then I would have to ask Peter, I, you know, Peter gets that.
Yeah, so you'll, you'll, well, we're gonna say temporary right now, we can redefine that later, do you want that motion?
If we could get. Can we make? Yeah, can we make sure?
For like ten weeks, we'll get that information added in there.
I would think it would be within a year, I mean, Peter's.
Well, it's subject to, it's subject to the Public Works agreeing and to the, so that he knows really what the amount is, so I don't think he knows the amount and where it's going.
Can we say minimum of, I mean, of, or a year and then revisit if it's not?
Let's see.
So we could discuss that, so a year?
And it's, but I just, but we need to defer to Ricky because it could be way more than he's experiencing, he's expecting, he doesn't know what he's expecting.
That's fine, I just think I'd, I mean, I'd be comfortable putting a year in there because again, it could open up a lot of doors.
Well, I get what you're saying, but it's that's a subject, it's a subject that Ricky and Peter are discussing, Peter Thornton discussing how much and where it's going
And Ricky's that way.
Because I, I can't, we can't make that decision. So, second.
Yeah.
Okay, how's the motion?
I should have turned the page over.
Motion by Carol.
I gotta steal another one before she gets back, hold on. Oh.
Why?
The camera's out of the.
Just for fuel bits, fuel bits.
We do, we didn't have any bits when we did the. When we did our request for bits in May, we didn't have any come in for fuel bits, so I contacted three of the major players and they have, two have submitted proposals.
Okay.
Can we write these down so you can see what they?
Are you have the same sheet that we used from the May opening and just under E R, I changed the day.
So you already have.
This one.
Eastern plumbing, uh. Eastern plumbing and heating, number two fuel will be priced at twenty-five cents over rash price on day of delivery. Propane will be delivered to town, that the town owns will be a fixed price of one ninety-four. Okay, let's see, how many, eastern plumbing with number two fuel and propane. Dead river. Propane with fixed price of one ninety-four. This propane option one is a fixed price of one point six four four seven a gallon. Or option two landed price, fixed margin of five fifty cents, but that, you know, one six four four seven is lower than one point nine four, it's fixed prices for propane, I always go for fixed if.
Yeah.
And you know what you have in the. Yeah, I want any.
Yeah.
Lives at river, and for the fuel oil, the number, number, there's two options, a fixed price of two point five two oh three or a landed plus fixed margin of twenty cents, which I would believe would be similar to twenty-five cents over rash price. So let's see, today laid it costs two, two, they gave an example, if the weighted cost is two point two eight, the margin is point two oh, then it would be two point four eight. So they're saying that they're gonna put twenty cents on the day's price, so they're both lower than eastern plumbing, eastern plumbing. What would you do with this?
Then little.
Wound that. Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I'm gonna discuss CDVG certification training. Renee had wanted to go to the CDVG certification training this August, but it conflicts with our town meeting and our town's uh elections. So both Suzette and myself are trained at CDVG right now. And my suggestion would be that we have her go next, next summer, because what she really needs to go to is the DOT certification again, because extremely complicated, we went once already and. The DOT, the DOT is for the CDVG, it's just sitting through explaining of grants and Suzette and I went. And just one person within the office or affiliated with the town needs to be certified anyway, so. I know she wants to go, but really, if I had a choice, I'd send her to the DOT one again, because the sidewalk grant's coming up and it's extremely complicated to manage a, a DOT grant. So. If you wanna change your, and and we just leave the town meeting on the eighth and and leave our voting on, we haven't voted the seventh in the town meeting on the eighth, right? So uh, if that sounds effective, we'll need a motion like.
Well, no, I think so.
No, no. Rockweed harvesting. Rogers Island's conservation article, okay.
There is a lot of discussion going on right now with rockweed harvesting and Rogers Island. And I've been going back and forth with Commissioner DMR, Patrick Kellinger. Uh, it was thought here that Rogers Island is in conservation, according to some old maps that Robert Headlock Sealy is here, um, provided to this night. It shows, um, Rogers is on the conservation map and then it shows, I believe, that it's not on anymore. So the question is, why, how to be removed and why, um.
Yeah.
Long story short, the commissioner is advising us to put it on the um, the voluntary registry, no cap registry, which is handled by the Down East Coast Conservancy. It is on that list, but the key word is voluntary, that means it's not enforceable, so, um.
If it's not voluntary, what's the, what would be alternative?
Well, there's no way, there's no way of enforcing it if it's not, if it's voluntary, I think, I think that's the basis of it.
I talked to another lady today, Deirdre.
Come on.
And she, eh eh.
What?
DMR.
Deirdre.
Deirdre Gilbert.
Gilbert.
I asked if if it was as simple as putting an article on town meeting saying that the town wants by DMR standards to classify Rogers Island and then it's, it's not a precaution. And she.
Isn't it classified as classified ground?
We thought it was, but it's not.
It's unsecure, they classified it as gap status, unsecure.
That's what that Google Earth image that I passed out has, it shows it on the conservation land layer with state GIS, this conservation land and we thought that was the end of it. But it's in a classification that the commissioner doesn't recognize as no cut rockweed.
So the point is, how do we make it?
Right, well, according to Deirdre, it's not as easy as getting an article, she said what the town should do is hire the town attorney to draft a deed of Rogers Island and make it conservation.
Well, I understand land trusts are very willing to um give compensation for any land being put in eastern or conservation and so I don't think the taxpayers should have to pay for this, I agree with it, it's like they need to step forward and do their legal work.
I think particularly since it gets, you know, we're ready to turn this into a habitat and bird, birders come up and go over there. And I think anything that they could do to help that, also the, we just talked to the Maine Island Tourism, blah blah.
Trails.
Whatever it is, and he wants to put the Rogers Island on there now, so everybody wants the action here, so.
So one of the land trusts.
We should not be the only one.
One, one of the land trusts should step up and encourage this conservation of this property, I don't believe the town should pay for the lawyer.
Yes. Yes.
Right. Um, when the town received Rogers Island
Yes.
from the will of June Ives Differson.
Yes.
Along with it came the trust fund. Bryce Davis, that's why Davis.
You should have forty thousand dollars.
We have around eighty thousand. So this is all for Rogers Island.
If that doesn't pay, if that doesn't pay the letter from the lawyer.
Yeah, yeah.
So if, so if push comes to shove, that could be used.
It's in a CD.
Yeah.
And if you wanted to withdraw some of it, I'm sure there's probably some penalty, but we to.
To lower it than that, yes, yeah.
Just saying, was that's what that money was for?
I just think, uh, all right, so I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just saying, and also, it'd be nice to have where the the parking lot is, where you can look over towards the island. That is all grown up, it's all turned into bamboo and I mean, you can't even, you, you can't even see the water from there. And she left, also left that piece of, so you could have access to get to the island and to be able to see that island. You can't even see the water, the signs they put up for no clamming, it's higher than the signs that they put up for no clamming. There's no way you can see, when you're driving a car or even what the the big S U Vs, you can't see over the top of that grass. And that, they used to keep it all mowed down and nice, maybe it was the people that, it might have had something to do with people that was across the street at the time, I'm not sure if they did that, because that house has changed hands now and.
Yeah.
We'll cut that one here.
That was for Zanson.
Right, they used, I think they might have kept it down because it it was their view too.
Yes, yes.
And now, I don't believe.
I think it's rented.
That's why. Yeah, and so, I mean, the town should really take care of that, I believe, so, I mean.
You're right.
I think you're right, I think you're right.
You know, maybe we used to go up there to watch, you know, just to turn in, you know.
Sure.
It was almost still like, I remember, you know, we always used to turn in and, you know, it was beautiful, watch the moon, you know, and shine across the
Yes, yeah, yeah.
the water and you can't see, you can't see anything.
It is a beautiful spot, it is.
So, since we have the funds, shall we have Renee uh see how much of your cost, the lawyer to do the
Yes.
crop, the legal work and also to maintain
To expedite things, I'm for sure, yeah.
parking lot, so we can see Rogers Island. That's definitely nice, because we have the money, but it probably needs to be in a different instrument that doesn't, doesn't require penalties to take the money out.
I don't know if it needs to be an article to create a deed to put Rogers Island in conservation, we've got the will, the last will and test
Thirty years, yeah.
from June and it says right in it, and this is what I sent to Mr. Kellinger, but apparently a will isn't enough, um. Rogers Island, the island can be used as a town park, wait, hold on, its purpose to be san- a sanctuary for birds. I love this, if the birds truly don't mind and are not seriously inconvenienced, the island can be used as a town park for recreational purpose. And then the most important line is permanent safeguard of the use of the island by birds.
Yes, so they, and it has.
And I think that was a general feeling to keep it.
For general enough, when that person came, for the, to put it on the main trail, the main
Yes. Yes.
water trail, I think it is.
That's right, yeah.
I will send this to our attorney and find out if we even need to take it to town meeting.
Yeah.
This is enough that, and the select board can just have a deed written, drafted, then we'll go that way.
Yeah, I think our intention at that time, without seeming too uh evil, but would not to be, not to really encourage tons of people going out there, that it should be the the key word sanctuary or quiet.
And, and first of all, not many people will be able to get there, but if they do, they have to not trash it, you know.
Yeah. Well, and they need to raise some, some roars.
Davis?
Yeah, I mean, as you draw up that document, two, two things in mind, first, we have a couple of picnic tables out there that are put there by the time four, but with the name Rogers Island on them and we've been using, voters have been using that for years and it's a wonderful place. So it should be worded so that that could be used, and secondly, you talk about Mita or Maine Island Trail project. Uh, my understanding is they often want to have kayakers camp overnight, please, uh, you have to think about that. If you're gonna encourage Mita, you have to have the wording correctly in the document.
Yes.
So I'm not saying encourage it, but I'd just like be aware.
So no.
Yes, we did talk, we actually did talk about that.
And those picnic tables were bird-proof, what, some of those picnic tables bird-proofed?
I think some of the bird is dead. There's, there's no birds left. Okay, I'll see.
Yeah, yeah, we used to be one table. I don't know if the business is still there anymore, but it used to be at the uh, uh, south end of the island.
Uh, Robin?
Uh, since I came all the way from Tampa, could I have two minutes where you can?
You can have more.
So I walked in on the beach this, this morning and I came across something that illustrates something that we often talk about, we're cutting seaweed or we're cutting rockweed, but you rarely see it, but. So this is a, this is a normal rockweed plant, it's about twenty-five, twenty-five years old. And this is an uncut one, so it has the form that everybody knows, there's the whole bass and pulling it upside down.
Will you talk that, please, or?
Oh, sorry. Turn around so the TV can see it too.
Turn, turn around several times.
Okay. So, yeah, yes, yeah, so this is a normal rockweed plant, it's fifteen years old, has bladders every year, it's attached down here, it's a long skinny thing and we talk about the three-dimensional architecture, it's got a canopy up here and a whole bass down here. That's the normal plant, that's what creates the fish habitat, that's where the idors forage up here with the antipods. And we've often talked about how the issue with the rockweed is not so much the taking of the biomass, but how the habitat changes and becomes different and the three-dimensional architecture becomes different. And that's the, sort of the point of contention that, you know, those who take it and pay, get paid for it by pound, think of it as biomass. And that's the, sort of the point of contention that, um, you know, those who take it and pay, get paid for it by pound, think of it as biomass. And those of us who think about it as habitat, think about the three dimensional architecture of the, of the forest, the rockweed forest, and when does it come back? So this morning I found a, a plant that had been cut, um, on Moose Horn, actually, on the state park, where it shouldn't have been. But this illustrates perfectly what we're talking about when we say it gets cut and then it turns into a rockweed bush. So that's what, that's what it turns into. I mean, you can see the difference. What happens is it loses its top. So you can see the top here is chopped off at some point within last year, I'd say. And then it starts sending out all these shoots. So it's not growing back to its full height. It's sending all its biomass and shoots out to the side. And we call this the toothbrush form. So when you say.
So it doesn't provide a canopy. It's just kind of a mass.
Not for a long time, not till it grows all the way back up there and growing two and a half inches a year.
Yeah. Yeah.
So this is the bush form, you know, compared to the tree form.
Tree form.
So anyway, I thought this really demonstrates what we often talk about, but we don't have examples to show and this is.
Where did you get this?
Uh, Copsman Bay State Park. I don't know. Ask the biologist.
Is there any connection to that occurring over the last several years with cutting and the additional population of green pad? I mean, is there any, no connection there? I'm just curious. I haven't actually seen it this year, so.
I don't have a problem.
But, but it was, it's being done around Rogers Island. I know this, several people who have been out there and said it's being cut massively.
And who would, who would, um, manage? I mean, how would we? Marine patrol could then cite people?
There's something I can do. When I talked to Deirdre today, she, she advised the select board to write a letter to the company and we all know who it is.